Good morning.
Morning.
They will pause the regular meeting and Teresa will open the Board of Finance.
Okay, we call the Board of Finance meeting to order and then we'll turn it over to Teresa.
The reason I needed to call this Board of Finance meeting to order is because we, a couple of different things. First thing is we should be getting our bond money here soon for the courthouse renovation and I want it normally back before when we had Justice Center renovation proceeds, we invested those until we needed them and to start using them. So I want to see if that's what you're, what you would like to do this time or if you have other plans or what you're doing exactly with, with the money.
Yeah, I think before we had talked about putting it into a CD.
Yes, that makes sense to put it into a CD. Is six-month CD seem to be the best on that?
It depends because I mean, they have, the rates have kind of dwindled a little bit, not a lot. I mean, they're still a lot better than they were a few years ago. But, so you're not going to get as best of rate if you do like a year, but then it's, you don't know what the rates are going to do. It's more, you're going to get a longer period of time. I mean, that's totally up to you guys, but it just seems like, just what I've been seeing is of course the year rates are a little bit less than the six-month, but of course they're anticipating possibly, you know, possibly a lower rate come six months, but who knows? I mean, it may go up. I mean, going in our economy lately.
Is there a need, Nathan, you may chime in on this, to split those amounts like maybe a three-month, six-month?
Most likely, I think so. The total that has been deposited is just shy of 13.3 million. That is divided into two distinct funds. Ultimately, we spend both of them. Just under 4 million is held by First National Bank as trustee in one fund and then the other 9.38 is held directly by us. There is somewhere around 1.1, 1.2 million dollars, give or take, that need to be reimbursed. And obviously, we'll have at least one, two construction draws over the next several months. My guess is that we would probably be safe if we deposited the 9.38 million that we have on the county side for now and probably split that between like a three-month and a six-month or something like that so that we don't have to withdraw and then hold that 3.9 for the first 1.2 that needs to be reimbursed to the county and then for the first construction part.
Somewhere I thought in some email it also said we should spend out one account.
Yes, and that's why I'm thinking that if we just spend out of that smaller one first, that allows us more that we can invest on the side that's held in our trench. I do have a call with Barnes and Thornburg this afternoon and they may be able to help me to clarify the details, but from what I have read in the documentation, the conversations I've had with them thus far, that, that seems like a fairly safe one. The nine-point whatever is split between maybe a three and a six, or whatever you decide, and the 3.913706 and 90 cents is held liquid for reimbursement in the first draw or two.
And if we get that three, the end of that three months, we haven't expended it out, we can always reinvest it at that time in Safe Matter another three months or whatever. Any questions on that?
Yeah, so I'd entertain a, entertain a motion to invest that.
I'd, I'd make the motion, 9.3 million to invest in a three-month and a six-month. Is it safe to say now the amounts that go in each of those or you need to talk to tongue-in-blank first or how do you want, how do we want that split? How much in, three, how much in?
Chuck, as I was telling you before the meeting started, we have an owner, architect, contractor meeting tomorrow. I might be able to pin Matt Notovich at tongue-in-blank down tomorrow to get that drawdown schedule and if you want to rephrase your motion such a way to give Teresa a little bit of leeway based on what I find tomorrow, that might be the best way?
Okay, got a motion in a second. Excuse me, any further discussion here on this? Further discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, do we need to do anything with the, is this the only thing we need to invest at this time is this 9.38 million?
Well, I've also received extra money as far as from the opioid, the unrestricted and restricted. And I wanted to see, that's coming up toward the end of July. I wanted to see if you guys wanted to go ahead and put that amount, I know where their spending is and things like that, if we wanted to put that money into those with them, you know, to increase those CDs for the unrestricted and restricted.
So would, how does that need to be divided up? Do we need to have a CD for the entire 63,000?
Well, it's, it's split up between.
Okay.
Yeah, restricted and unrestricted so that they, they're kept separate.
Okay.
All right. I don't know of any, they're all that we have set aside at this time.
Would it help if I maybe touch base with LeAnn and see where things are with that?
The expenditures they may have and if there's going to be any draws, I mean, goes back in July and get the CD, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can do that. Yep, that's not a problem.
So we'll let that ride for a while.
Okay.
Is there any other business at Board of Finance?
No, that is it.
Okay, so I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we will reconvene for our normal commissioner meeting. Elena?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm here because we would like to hire three contracted positions. We need an immunization nurse. This person would help administer vaccines and assist our public health nurse. This person would work no less than four and no more than six per contract and we can pay for this out of our Vaccines for Children grant. And that grant runs from July 1st through, of 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Next thing is a septic permit officer. This person would evaluate all soils, design permit and inspect all onsite systems, onsite septic systems. And we can pay for this out of our Health Department Fund, 8912, and, and we have a line for contracted services. Okay, that, that position right now I do and I do it, but it's, I'm, I'm on overload. Okay? The next thing is our Emergency Preparedness Officer. We have not had this position in our office since 2025. Okay? This past year, I have attended some of the meetings because we have to have this position in order to get Health First Indiana funding. So I've been going to the meetings just so it looks like we're doing something. But our current plans are from 2013, but we haven't had anybody doing this in the office since 2015. And again, this can be a part-time or contracted position and this position can be paid for out of the IDOH grant. It's a, it's for emergency preparedness and that grant should be July 1st through June of 2025. Okay, all you have to do to get that grant basically is say yes. So I said yes. So that's what we would like to do in our department.
An extra 20,000, is that the one that's?
That's 25,000. Yeah.
Back up on the septic.
On the septic permit officer?
Yeah, the length of contract, are all these going to be annual or are they going to?
I would, I would like to do like per system, I have between, on a basic system, I have between three to three and a half hours.
Is this a position you're going to need all the time?
Yes.
And they don't make a contract, they make a position.
Okay.
Contracted ones, you won't be the ones that you're like hired someone to do a clinic for you or to help, that they're not going to be employees of the county full-time. But with the sewer, the septic, that sounds like that's going to be a position you need all the time.
Okay, but.
But it's just part-time.
Okay, but like what if we go months and not need one? So we're paying somebody to do a job that they won't be doing anything. Do what?
That position can do another job in the department. So like we have two positions that you need, supplement, something you need all the time. They can be the sewer septic and then a preparedness ready person. Combine the jobs, does that make sense?
Yes.
If they're, if they're going to be positions you need all the time.
And we will need them.
Because you don't want lots of people coming back every contract.
Right. I just didn't know. That's, that's fine with me.
Could you do a contract for a year and do something?
Yeah, you can, but if it's something you're going to want all the time, then you're kind of not obligated by the, the way you're seen as, you're not going to have any contract then. But that's something, have you talked to council already?
Well, yeah.
That, that's just something to think about. Obviously, I'm not committed to that just for your sake, for your department. If it's something you're going to need.
I know before we had, years ago, we had a, a preparedness person plus a foods person, but I would like to keep the foods and do the, and be the administrator. You know, I can, I feel like I can do that job well. Okay, but the other two, I.
Immunization?
Yeah, a nurse.
Oh, emergency preparedness.
Yes, we do. We have a full-time nurse, but with, you know, we want to go mobile with the clinics and stuff, so.
That's the one where it's just going to be, she's going to come in and doing mobile work, not all the time that could be contracted.
So you're saying septic could be contracted, nursing?
No, wait a minute, the other way around. Immunization, nurse can be contracted, septic and emergency preparedness.
The BFC grant? Yes, that. For a two-year period, this first one, did you say?
It's, it's for a one-year period. It'll start July 1st and run through June 2029.
Okay. So that one would definitely be a contract for one year, not just paid for out of a grant, right? Then the emergency preparedness officer, also grant funded. What is the length of that grant?
Every year, if you apply for this grant, you're given that, okay? Because we have to have this and it's something that we have to have and we don't have. Like I said, I can launch the meetings just so. So we can keep with this HFI.
Okay, so if we're ever into a situation where we have to opt out of a program, is that position better off being a contracted position? Think, think what you're taking about?
It's just, like you said, it just depends.
Yeah.
I'm not a big person on contracted because if you're someone who's going to be with the county for the next five years, we're just not giving them the benefits or, there's, there's got to be a reason why you have a contract. Does that make sense? I mean, if someone who's going to be working with the county for the next 20 years, then that's a completely.
I think our justification there is that if we're being paid for off of a grant, you're not 100% sure that it's going to be there every year even though it's easy to apply for, but the state says we can start cutting a budget, that's one thing we're going to take off the table. So, and again, that's just my opinion that if it's a grant situation, maybe we need to stay with the contract, but this other septic, that's something genuine and we need to go on, but we're still open for discussion here, guys. Immunization nurse and the emergency preparedness, part-time, contract, benefits. And then our septic permits, kind of the situation where it is. Position. I don't know, other comments? And even if we just go a year and we find out this emergency preparedness can be tied in with something else and it does become more of a full-time situation, we settle or hand down the road, but nothing. In with a contract, good for those two positions.
Yeah, and also a contract that you're minimizing training from their contracting position. Because you can say this specifically, what you do.
What you think would be, is this a part-timer, full-time person for these positions or a contract? If you get somebody called, like, some of these positions could be, could be defined.
You know, and I was thinking like for a septic permit officer, like a retired, you know, person could come in and.
They know anything about septic.
Well, I mean, they would have to be IOPA certified. They would have to have that certification, which isn't, it's very hard to get. And then like our state rep, they will work with that person, you know, because they work with, they work with me. You know, and I can work with them and if something comes up that I'm, I can, I mean, I will do them, but right now it's so odd.
So these.
To the septic, because I know who runs down middle and all that, you know, what kind of stuff can you run into and just everything else is. Yes, or even they will find somebody to do or contract, they're both, should have people on the staff. And I guess that's why it was concerning, that they have to go with somebody that probably don't always need one.
So these positions need to be approved by council also? Well, let's, let's just push this on forward then. Yes, I would make a motion that we go with a part-time position for the immunization nurse, emergency preparedness officer and a county employee position for septic permit officer. Any other discussion?
I, I want.
That is a, there's a part-time, the immunization, part-time.
Yeah, it's just whatever we would need.
Either. Yeah. Contracted for part-time.
That makes sense.
Okay.
That is contracted.
Part-time.
As needed.
Which is a contracted, go ahead, with Elena's request, contracted as needed, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so it goes here to emergency preparedness is contracted and septic is part-time?
Septic is. Yes, at this point.
Can I ask a question? Am I allowed to speak? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so are we creating positions right now? Are you holding on the positions and having a bit in our budget?
She has funding in.
Right. So are we, we, so you're passing the motion to create the positions yet?
Next, six months until. She has money to cover.
We have what?
You have money to cover the septic permit?
Yes.
Budget. But still, the council still has an opportunity to, what they want. Again, the emergency preparedness surrogate, be that tied in with something else, road, that may become a full-time county employee, but in, that's a grant. Go on, contract, let this play out a little. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jennifer?
Okay, I am back to talk about the power load cot system for the corner vehicle. I did clarify, it does have a one-year manufacturer warranty. I'm pre-owned or new, so the one that I was looking at is pre-owned, so she said it does come with a one-year warranty. I didn't investigate any further on the extended warranty because I didn't feel that you need to pay that money for it. I have some mechanically inclined deputies on my team, plus my husband, that will help install and provide maintenance on, on it if it's needed.
Think you've already watched a YouTube, right?
And I watched a YouTube video, my husband and I did. So there's a couple, and, and that was her recommendation. There's a, there's a, I'm a, I'm a hands-on learner type person, so I have to watch something. And so my husband and I watched it and there's like a floor plate assembly, an anchor assembly, a transfer assembly and a trolley assembly. So there's like four different parts to it, but the video goes over everything that, on how to install it. The hardest part is there is a hardwire system. It has to be hardwired to the battery on the vehicle. So when we talked about transferring it to the current vehicle that I have now, how hard is it going to be if I get a different vehicle? That is the hardest part, but like I said, I've, I've got some pretty talented people on my side, so I don't think it'll be a problem. The overall length of it, it is the same length as the cot that I have now. I measured the cot that I have, so there's no extra length in it, but getting a vehicle can be a little bit difficult on, on measuring the length. We thought that even an Expedition was going to be long enough, and I think I told you Expedition, but it's a Yukon that has 101 inches and we need at least 89.5 is the minimum length that I need. But 95 is better because it gives you a little bit extra room. So, so that's on, on the cot. And then on the. It charges to the hard, where it's hardwired, it charges that way. Okay, that wasn't. Okay, okay. I didn't see that part on it, but the ambulances have them as well, so, but it has a backup battery as well. So it has both hardwired. And, and honestly, we're not using it like four, five times a day as well, like the ambulance does. I did talk to Brandon about this. He does not have a power load system, so he's not exactly sure how it operates. He does have the power cot and he can provide, provide us training on the cot, but the striker rep said that they could also provide us training on the trolley system if we need it. Okay, that's.
The vehicle.
So that's it on that. And then on the vehicle, I talked to Don Dobson to get additional quotes that wasn't aware that I needed, but he gave me a quote on a 2021 Chrysler Pacifica that is long enough to house a cot once the seats are removed. It has 50,000, 57,000 miles and it's 31,329. It's on the lot now. The day that I met with him, he said that they were getting a trade-in that night. It's a 2013 GMC Yukon. It has 161,000 miles on it, but it's only $14,000 and it has 101 inches in the back. A console has to be removed, but it can house that cot as well.
No, shouldn't be putting many on it.
Yeah, it's a lot of miles, but yeah, I don't put, I think last year, I, I only get the oil change because it's timed to, but it's not, it's under its 3,000 miles. I didn't put that much on it.
Do you have a recommendation on which vehicle you like?
Um, I, I don't. Either one of them would be good. The Yukon being bigger and being able to get around and, and weather, I think would be good. I like the price of it better. So, no, I don't have. Either one of them would work. Yes, that was, it was not long enough. No, it was not long enough.
Let's, let's take these one at a time. Let's. Let's, let's take these one at a time. Let's get the power striker approved.
So I would make a motion to go forward with the power load striker.
And reflecting back on what was shared in our joint session, that was 36,000.
Right.
And I think we add to that 817 dollars and 29 cents.
For shipping, yes.
We will not be entertaining a purchase of any type of maintenance agreement, because it comes with one year, correct?
Yep, it comes with one year.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, yay. Like for drug, drug abuse programs. Renown to a vehicle. Nathan, did you say you had some funding for this?
No.
No, oh. Any comments? We have a choice of a couple of ones here. One is high mileage for 14,000, and the one is less mileage for 31,000. Dimension-wise, they will both work. And the other option is to put it in the current van and wait till we find something else, switch it over, but I think the price on the one is, I think we're not going to be putting many miles on it. Of course, we haven't seen that, right? Is that the trade-in that's coming in?
It, it's in now. Don Dobson got it in the night that I, or the day, the night that I met with him. So I'm going, I can leave there and go, and go look at it. I'm not sure who owns that vehicle, that van.
Be getting rid of it by the other. Okay, so why don't we table this until Jennifer can come back with actual purchase contract that may have a trade-in value on it?
Okay.
Move on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think that'd be, make sense for you to take a look at it, and I'm sure they would hold it for you if it's something we're interested.
Okay.
And then I feel it would be nice if you are leaning one way or another. Like if you make a recommendation, so to speak, of what you'd like to see, you sort of did, but-
Yeah.
On the Yukon.
Yep.
So, all right.
Yeah, and I do agree, like, I get, I go to some really different places, so it would be nice to have something that I know that I can, I can get back, and I don't have to rely on the officers or first responders to take me.
Makes sense.
Okay, we good?
So do I take the van there then? Okay.
Stay there, let them look at it.
Okay.
Gentlemen, Yukon is what you're interested in, and they can do the paperwork for you.
Okay. Okay.
And, and I'm sure they would hold it for next meeting.
Okay.
There's a good possibility.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Good morning. Just a couple of courthouse things. First, I wanted to pick up the discussion that we had begun at the joint session regarding the change order process. I had requested a little more flexibility in authorizing small-value change orders on my own, and then tearing the system up to when I would have to ask Commissioner Lamer for his sign-off versus bringing it to the full board. As I had presented last week, I, I suggested that anything up to 2.75% of the contingency balance I could approve on my own. Based on, once reimbursement has occurred, we'll have about $600,000, give or take. So I would be limited to 16,500, including the architect's share, and then double or triple that, depending on what you set, Maurice, and anything above that. And then, of course, with each expenditure out of the contingency, the maximum that we could approve on our own would decline proportionally. I just wanted to see if you had any thoughts on how to do that, if you just wanted to keep it as we did before, if you have other percentages. I just was hoping to have some guidance so that when they start coming through, I can keep things moving as smoothly as possible.
We, I request an email, say what the change order was about.
Yeah, that's fine. You, you'll always know what's going on. I won't, I wouldn't just sign off and leave it at that, because you're going to want to know what the budget looks like going forward and what's happening, and I'll still be making week, either bi-weekly or monthly reports, depending on progress.
So that seemed to work out fine last time for the Justice Center, and I'd also, I talked with John Allen there last week. And I, I feel that we should go forward with that type of change order system.
You're willing to have that pressure put on you, right?
I am.
Okay.
And, because I have full trust in, in John Allen and the team. And we, main thing we want to keep- Yeah, keep, keep it moving, and so I would make a motion to continue the change order process. Yes, would it be easier if I would give you this, that two and a half percentage? Yeah. Yes.
So you're making a motion to approve this recommendation?
That is correct. So that's making a motion to approve the change order process as presented by Nathan.
Seconded?
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then quickly, thank you. Not a whole lot of project progress to report from last week's meeting, just demolition and deconstruction continuing. But I did want to give you the heads-up that, A, we have scheduled our regular bi-weekly owner-architect-constructor calls for Tuesdays at 11:00, beginning tomorrow. Typically, I just, I go to John's construction trailer, and we talk with his boss and unobliging virtually. We will be having our first walkthrough with Lumenot at 11 o'clock next Monday morning, the 24th of June. It's not necessary that any of you be there, but I did want to extend that invitation to Commissioner Lamer as the steering committee member, or if he's unavailable to one of the other two of you, just so that you're kept in the loop if you are so inclined. I know, Maurice, you've been on-site once before, but this is an official walkthrough with the architect. We'll check in on progress in a little more detail. They'll look at some of the issues like the hardwood flooring, other things that have come up or will come up, so that we can have that conversation in person instead of relying on emails and photographs.
What time is that on the-
11 o'clock next Monday.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Got a question for Nathan? Gary?
Table, we have the pit open. Bridge 249. I got Jeff.
Nathan?
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Gary. Jeff?
First quote is from Milestone.
Okay. Okay. Looks like the total bid, 1,040,012.60. And that one is from Milestone. Thank you. Milestone Contractors LP. Hey. From La Porte Construction is 918,009.42.
As far as any highway, I'd probably award it.
We don't need any motion to approve until you come back next time.
Actually, if you could make a motion to approve pending engineer's review.
Okay.
Then, then that would give us stability to fast-track this.
Okay.
Okay, so I would make a motion to award this bridge to La Porte Construction pending engineer review.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All that I got have been the ones that done the last two bridges.
Aye.
They do do quite a bit. Not up in this area as much, but they are, they've absorbed some other smaller bridge companies. They're kind of doing it under that umbrella name. Okay, the next item on the agenda, have the approval and signing of the claims and payroll number 12.
Okay, I have reviewed the claims and payroll number 12, and I make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Whoa.
We'll table, we'll table the minutes. We will go ahead and approve payroll well.
Oh, did that. Claims and payroll together.
Motion item, got a notice from National Flood Insurance Program Unity Rating System. Something we may pass on. Carla. Because basically it says, as a participating community in the NFIP, we'd like to encourage your community to consider the NFIP's community rating system. CRS is a volunteer initiative program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management activities that exceed the minimum NFIP requirements. Through this program, flood insurance premium rates are discounted, effective to reduce flood risk resulting from unity action. At, at the three goals of unity. I know that Carla had to do a report, floodplain report this past year. I sit in on one meeting. I think before we would jump into this program that need to contact Carla, get her input on this, probably give us a little further nation. Comments on that? Thing else from the board? I know that floodplain people that with Carla, met with, that's something. Carla could give us more direction. Well, she may have gotten the same letter, but it's not CC'd or- Oh, okay. And I just, one other thing I wanted to bring up is, I think we all received this letter from Doug Denton. Talks about when they had their board meeting, this was the ADA board. Board agreed to have the position removed from the EMA Director Board's supervision. After a conversation, the board feels that the ADA position either be a standalone board or overseen by the Building Department or the Health Department. Reason for this is that there is nothing in the EMA description that relates to this job. As most things are more or less code enforcement items, this needs to be under those departments that enforce these. One commissioner was in attendance as the Highway Department, two town council representatives, and the EMT. Motion was made and unanimously voted yes, or have, to have this done. So Gary, you were at that meeting, and Mike was at the meeting. Have any comments on that? Yes?
Um, Nathan probably knows more about this, maybe anybody who puts a bill under the CDC for a while.
Yeah, very briefly back in 2011, it was assigned to me.
Right, and then it got assigned to EMA. But if you're looking at the Health Department's board, Building Inspector, I think both of the departments have funded their own things going on. So I just wanted to make that comment, and I think that's up to the commissioner to decide whether this could be the fault.
I think, or when, I'd have been the council that was looking at moving the EMA to a part-time position before Sheila's time. Think adding that is kind of helped keep that a full-time. RIS grant writing and that type. I just wanted to bring that up. Any decisions to make on that now? Investigated. Unity comment?
I got one thing. If I may comment, uh, August, Nathan, you can probably assist me with this. The annual elevator inspection is due at the courthouse. Make contact with John Allen, orchestrate everything through him and Nathan to have that done. It has to be done yearly.
Well, if it's under a remodel situation, they may postpone that. Building is completed. Building completed final inspection. Yeah, they are still using.
Yeah, quite a bit, and maybe even more now under construction when it was open. So I think we should go ahead with that inspection.
Larry, you might want to address our roofing issues.
The roofers are here today. Uh, the new jail roof they put in in 2021. Done a patch job on it, firestones have issues. They come up with another, originally they put an eight-inch patch over the seams. What the roof is doing, the rubber is getting so hot up there. Pulling apart at the seams. Right now, it have a water leak of Judge Welker's jury room. They come, rest at, they're currently there to do the fix. Recommend that, ask him if this does not work. Tom and Blank said...
Thought this was the same material.
Uh, got the approval. Mike from Tom and Blank got all the material to do Judge Welker's due justice petition. And got the material coming that hoped in the next couple of weeks.
Jail roof. You've been made aware of the heating problem in the annex? This is morning, Laura?
No, have not. I can go downstairs and lower that, but some of the office...
Larry will check into it. Need to put you on the spot there.
Oh, it's all right.
If you were here, can't walk in the door and walk out.
I don't like coming in.
Got a captive audience. No other comments?
Okay.
Motion to...
Yeah, just briefly on that west parking lot. The striping will be finished on that. We're planning on having that striped where it's straight parking. Reason for that is when we looked at angle, we would need to have an exit out to the west side if all of that was angled, so it could flow through. And part of the delay on that was getting the sidewalk done as far as seeing where that would go, so there was no wasted space on that, so that we could maximize the parking lot. So I believe we're to a point where that could be painted and could be finished up.
Was in the paving.
That is correct. It was in the bid, and so that job can be completed.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.